Good evening, it is five forty-five. We will be opening the public hearing. Per RSA one ninety-eight twenty. So he can cooperate school board will hold a public hearing to accept an in-kind donation for a hitting development center at Sohegan High School. And we all had a memo in the packet to discuss this, but Mr. Interim Superintendent. Is there anything you'd like to discuss on it?
Sure happily review. It really is a pleasure and honor. Clearly, a family was impacted and touched in. The experience through athletics that Sohegan High School. And seeing an area that we could support and focus on and continue to develop in the baseball program. Has reached out to Kelly and to the high school and to us. To provide an extraordinary donation of a baseball player development center. It would be, it really looks like it's it's two tunnels in which hitting and pitching to almost, we want to say about three seasons. So I'm not sure about four seasons, but you never know the dedication and sometimes I think hitting that ball might be a little bit cold, but. It really is an extraordinary investment. And so it's about some new, it's two seventy-foot long hitting tunnels, all the construction materials work with on the site prep and permits. And turf surface for the entire inside. So that is up to about ninety thousand, we expect the donation to amount to of in-kind donation. So why we have a public hearing? So we want to make sure that the community is aware of this extraordinary gift. But also what kind of obligation that this puts forth for the district for the future? And as I, it was talked about in the memo, Mr. Preston, our facility director has cost. Out the obligation of regular maintenance and the the biggest cost in the near future is utilities, it's the electricity cost. Roger works on a, on a, a percentage base or a cost per square foot base. He does understand that the first few years, we don't expect any of the materials, the net of the structures to require. Any significant maintenance early. But he is looking at depending on the use, it's really the electricity is the biggest fee. We're looking at a six-month, but I met with Kelly and Tony today. That doesn't mean the six months is going to require light six months because you know, in the summer you just can be used at nine o'clock. And it's and and there would be some power for the two pitching machines and this does support a program. Equipment already, so we have pitching machines that would go in and allow hitting when we don't have pitchers available. This really is an extraordinary gift, extraordinary opportunity for the sports program here, Kelly. As Director of Athletics would assume all responsibilities for scheduling and support and budgeting and working with Roger. But if this is supported, then Roger and Kelly will meet soon and work with it with the donating and the construction company to start. Donate and to start the construction. And simultaneously, the board has already designated a committee to to address the naming of this facility. And that will come to the board per policy, at least ninety days before occupancy or finish, if you will. So it's a ninety thousand dollar gift with five thousand dollars, somewhere between five and twelve thousand dollars of. Maintenance over the next five years and five thousand really is connected to the. Utility, which Roger and I and Kelly expect to be lower than that because we don't expect to be that kind of use for six months, most of it will be without it. Anything else I can provide for the wonderful people?
Questions? No questions? I know we've had a chance to review some of this. I know they said removal relocation of bleachers, there's. I think they're gonna have the same amount of seating and things available that people are used to, so.
Yes.
Even though we're taking up space for one thing, we're not taking.
Yeah, and I I sat with Roger, reviewed every single item on the district provide. He is aware and believes everything is eminently doable within his crew and his piece, so. I specifically asked him about that, I said, is that scary? He goes, nope, not at all, we can do that. Nothing and there is a mound of loam that we are working on clearing, which will be needed to be done anyway, that'll be part of this project of in-kind as well.
Back corner at the end of the baseball field, right? You know? Amherst Middle School over towards the right, the power lines, that area, right?
Yeah, I have the picture. Somewhere.
Yeah, it was in the.
Yeah.
Prior ones.
Truly practical matters, if there's a way to continue to leave the walking trail that goes behind there and cuts through. Or a walking trail in an alternate place there, that would be lovely to ride on horses. I know other people use it as well.
Yeah, we like walking.
Yeah.
We like walking trails.
Yeah.
It's a very informal walking trail, it's not.
Yeah. So that's where it is, yeah, right where.
Yeah.
Yep. And the walk is a walking trail back here?
Along the back fence line?
Yeah.
So.
Um, of the of the baseball field, you can, yeah, you can cut through to that.
Yeah, I will talk.
Between the road and.
We can support that, the more power to us.
Yeah. Great. Any other discussion?
Who? Who will be allowed to use it?
Um, so just like any, any other facility, Kelly will handle requests, it's certainly available to the local youth baseball programs. And of course, the high school programs. Whether or not other areas will be a feat connected to it, that is possible, but. Anybody, any Kelly, so it is possible if a softball program wanted to come and hit. Absolutely Kelly scheduled it as long as it's an appropriate supervised and within the direct use. So just like Kelly handles turf, she handles all the facilities.
Good.
Just looking for appropriate use and prove it, and if it's an outside agency, we'll have a cost be associated with it as well. Excellent question.
No. Anything else? Okay, um, thank you very much, and when we. Well, when we close, after we close the public hearing, we'll wait till six o'clock to start our meeting and then we'll take a motion. To accept this right at the beginning of our meeting at six o'clock.
Perfect, I appreciate that very much.
All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Since there's no public here.
Katie, do you want to ask any questions about this?
Yeah. Oh, is there any Zoom, anyone on Zoom?
Let's see, it wasn't a minute ago.
Christie was asking.
Yeah, do you want to send it to her?
Yes, well, can you?
I can.
Okay, all right, we don't.
No one's at Zoom right now.
All right, since we have no one on Zoom, there's really no public comment, so I'll take a motion to close the public, public hearing.
So moved.
I got a first, second by Mr. Gonstra, and I guess we can just, everyone in favor. We don't know. And there would be no one opposed, so that passes and public hearing is closed.
I just sent the link to you because I don't have Christie's.
I will send that to her, thank you.
You with me?
Yes.
Thank you everybody.
Thank you. We're gonna get started.
We are recording.
Okay, good. Good evening, welcome to the Sohegan School Board meeting, it is November tenth at six o'clock. And before we get started. Uh, Christie Peters is with us on Zoom. Christie, can you say if it was difficult for you to be here tonight and if you are alone?
Yes, I'm traveling and I am alone.
Great, thank you. Um, before we get started, anything else, we want to follow up on the public hearing. And there is a requested board action. It is to approve the following motion, the Sohegan School Board accepts the in-kind donations related to the baseball player development center. And the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. Do I have a motion on that?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Gonstra, second. Second by Mr. O'Keefe. Um, we already had the public hearing, but is there any other discussion?
Thank the family for this generous gift to the community, I think this is something that's going to do a lot of value to our athletic program and the community's athletic programs in years to come, so.
Yes, yes, it's a sincere thank you. It's incredible what's being developed for our players to be able to be used, so thank you so much. Anything else? All right, we will need to take a roll call vote since Christie is on Zoom and starting with Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Gronster, yes.
Grund, yes.
Dayu, yes.
Glaze Zimmerman, yes.
And Ms. Peters?
Uh, Peters, yes.
Great, thank you, that is passed. Um, absolutely incredible, so thank you again. Uh, we will open up for public input, we do not have public here, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, so.
Yeah, me myself.
Seeing no public to have inputs, we will have a follow-up at the end of the meeting, just to make sure we follow guidelines. Um, the next thing on the agenda is the student-teacher presentation. Uh, Katie, would you like to come forward? This is Katie Rawls, she's the new. Special Services Administrator here at Sohegan High School, I just want to call him Director. Yes.
Yeah, you push that and get green?
You just press it once and let go, it should go? No.
There we go.
The special ed teacher can't figure it out, well, we have a problem. Um, so hi, everyone, I'm Katie Rawl and I am thrilled to be joining you guys tonight, I've met some of you in finance committee meetings so far this year. But I'm here to talk a little bit more about what special education looks like here. Some of the things that we're doing in relation to neighboring towns that set us apart in our practice. And then some thinking about how we're going to continue to move the department forward and really deepen the practices of special education here. Um, so to get started. Um, there is a, I did just a little brief history of special education law, some updates to special. Special education legislation that will have some financial impacts for the district moving forward. Again, highlights of programming, what are we doing differently, and then next steps to continue our work. In two thousand and seventeen, there was a landmark special education case called Andrew F versus the Douglas County School District. And the Supreme Court ruled that school districts have a substantive burden. To craft IEPs that are driven to allow students access to challenging objectives in the general education curriculum. Um, in law conferences. Andrew F is really kind of the framework through which special education complaints are examined, so it's always important and always what I'm reminding our department to think about. How are we giving children access to the most rigorous education that their circumstances allow them access to? So that's kind of the the modern iteration of special education law. Um, our history comes from PL ninety-four, one forty-two, which and a combination of. Um, the section five oh four of the Americans with Disabilities Act. That reminds us to be thinking about educating students in what's called their least restrictive environment. Um, which is the their environment that allows them to be the most independent and that's going to look different on a student-by-student basis. IEP teams work in conjunction with families and individual students to determine what that student's LRE is. And it's on kind of a sliding scale and it can change from moment to moment, day to day. In nineteen ninety, IDEA was authorized and that really adjusted special education practice away from just merely including students. But to actually providing direct instruction. And as IDEA has been reauthorized, the scope of what specially designed instruction looks like has has changed. And it's focused on providing individualized. Instruction for each student. Um, and that sounds weighty, like we're going to be providing one-to-one instruction to each student, but individualized instruction doesn't necessarily mean individual instruction. It means that we are planning with each individual student's needs in mind. As we bring all students to the table in our classroom and our special educators have. Training and practice in working with folks to develop that specialized instruction and deliver it to our students. Some recent changes in special education legislation have now increased the maximum age that special education students can stay enrolled in programs from twenty-one to twenty-two. The students that would typically access their education for that long are typically our most complex and most involved learners. And so the the implications of that. Mean that it requires, they require more staff. Um, they require additional space because they often come with a host of equipment. Um, and they require additional. Partnerships with outside agencies, and so the complexity with which that additional year. Brings to districts is just something that's going to kind of change the the financial landscape of the district moving forward. Another piece of special education law that changed this summer is that. Um, a bill was signed in January that created the Office of the Special Education Advocate, which is separate from and in addition to. The Office of the Child Advocate and this. Agency was been touted as kind of like a special education watchdog and another tool for families to reach out to when they have a concern or complaint about special education. Um, and in my opinion, as a practitioner, I think it 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 really pushes us to always be critically examining our practices and always be thinking if there were to be a complaint. What would they say about what we did? Um, so knowing that these additional agencies are out there has really kind of. Always pushed me to think about, hmm, so if a complaint were made, what were the questions they'd ask me, what are the things that we have done? Um, so it it highlights kind of the procedural nature of things that we need to move forward with. In light of all of that, it's important to highlight what we already are doing for students. Um, we offer really. Three main, main models of service delivery, the first is through academic support and case management services. Special education, special education teachers service these children in their general education setting. And supplement that instruction in classes called academic support or maybe through consultation meetings with a student. Um, the next layer of support is our alternative support program that's staffed by two special education teachers full-time. And provides social emotional support to our students to really give them a safe place and space to go if they're a bit dysregulated. And can't be in the classroom to problem solve and kind of get back to class and get back to work. And our third program that we offer is our transitions program, transitions, transition services are again most complex learners. Um, and they come with lots of different skills, abilities and things they are working on in transitions. We provide functional and vocational instruction in our transitions program. And we also have a community-based portion of our transitions program where. The kids are hopping on those vans, going out every Friday. Getting experience in generalizing their skills into the world that they'll live in when they leave us. Um, and we also have students that are going out and engaging in work activities, part-time jobs. Um, supporting, you know, supporting our different buildings, we're trying to set up some opportunities for that outside of our building, so. Those are our three main programming pathways. Our current population is a hundred and sixteen identified students, sixteen of which are serviced in our alt support program. And fourteen are serviced in our transitions program. Um, in the next couple of years, our transitions program is going to grow. Exponentially, um, we have a cohort of kids that are kind of moving up through the district that will cause that program to go to grow. Coupled with the additional year of education, that program is going to get numbers up into the twenties, almost thirties. Um, so we're doing a little bit of work on planning for that now. And then our staff allocation in relation to our student population, like I mentioned before. Alt support has two teachers, we have one para that works with those students. Um, our case management staff is seven teachers and thirteen paras supporting students in the classroom. And then our transitions program has one teacher, one B C B A, one full-time speech and language pathologist. And thirteen paras. Um, in addition to those folks, we have a school psychologist, a social worker, another speech and language pathologist, a reading interventionist. And we contract with a whole lot of letters that do a lot of work for kids, OT, PT, TBI, O N M. And ACC. And where are our students headed when they leave us is always for me at the high school level, what drives what we're doing for them while they're here? In two thousand and twenty-one, nine of our students, identified students went on to two or four-year education, six went on to employment. Directly after high school, two went to an apprenticeship program, three did a gap year and one was undecided. Um, again, our post-secondary outcomes really drive what we're doing here each day as we start planning for students to leave us. The first day they get here, so. Um, we're working on kind of aligning our practices with where kids are headed. What sets us apart from other school districts is really our commitment to heterogeneity. At this point, we don't offer any sort of leveled or tracked courses for special education students, they receive all of their core academic instruction in the general education setting. Which is relatively unique, some other districts offer like a level below a college prep level course. Um, and there are at times implications for that as well, so our commitment to inclusion really sets us apart. Um, and we're actively seeking additional opportunities to include even our most complex students in the general education setting. Um. We are, to that note, we are actually looking at developing unified co-curriculars. Co-curriculars would allow us, unified co-curriculars would allow us to apply for grant money through the state for each unified co-curricular that we offer. Um, so right now I'm working with our transitions teacher on developing a proposal for a unified cooking course. Where our transition students would be scheduled in there and then we would schedule in general education students to serve as mentors. And peers in that class, so students are receiving their functional direct instruction. Within a class full of their typical peers, there are some really nice opportunities and we're hoping to over the next few years add. Unified cooking, unified music, unified art and unified P E. To start. We also are building out. Our unified sports program, unified track was a huge success in the spring, we're looking at adding unified basketball and unified soccer coming up. And we also have students who are taking ownership of their own learning profiles. And creating groups to help build awareness in the community. Um, we have a little cohort of students who started the neurodiversity awareness and acceptance club. Um, and they're really kind of taking on issues of our more neurodivergent students and and looking to provide. Um, no sound zones during Fang Fest where when kids are overstimulated, they can go for a quiet place and just kind of be if they need to. Um, so we have a great group of kids who are looking to take ownership of who they are and create additional opportunities for themselves and other learners who might. Who might align with those students. And the benefits of this are really creating. Human beings who are inclusive, aware, empathetic and supportive of of. Others who learn differently in their environment, so. It's it's amazing that our commitment is that high. With all of this, where are we headed next? Um. I always believe that. You know, while we ask the taxpayers to fund a budget based upon the writing of IEPs based upon individual needs. We also have a burden to critically examine our practices and making sure that we are effectively utilizing those resources. Um, so really, we're kind of in in the process of critically examining what we're doing right now and. In our, in our prior budget meetings, the discussion of, you know, we're talking about making some additional cuts in different places and what does that look like for our students? And and for me, that notion is really. Looking at building fiscally responsible, efficient departments. And as the needs of our children change, the needs of of. Of what we can offer them in the scope of a building will change and kind of ebb and flow as well, um, so. While it's while, you know, while we always ask to have our budgets funded entirely, I I hope that it is. Believed that I'm always critically examining what we are doing as a district and as individual IEP teams crafting IEPs for students. So right now we're engaged in a bit of a paradigm shift and moving from models of adult support. To models of specially designed instruction and skill acquisition. So what that could look like would be. Rather than students' schedules getting put into power school and students getting pushed out into various courses. And then us sending resources to various classrooms based upon student need. We would be more thoughtfully grouping children into classes and assigning a special educator with a specific purpose to work on skills in that general education setting. Um, and to do that, we have kind of a three-step process that we're looking at. First, we're looking at crafting IEPs that are driven by the teaching of those specific skills rather than than. A IEPs that are looking at the completion of academic tasks. And that's a little bit of a paradigm shift, um, so for instance. If we're writing IEP goals that are talking about the completion of math assignments. The completion of three-step algebraic problems that involve graphing and slope intercept form. Can be generalized into working with students on problem solving, utilizing a model, applying. You know, looking at a set of formulas, choosing the correct one and then applying the steps to a similar problem. It's really kind of expanding what are, when we take a step back, what are those skills that students need to complete those academic tasks? And working on building those because those are what is the most generalizable to post-secondary settings. Our next step is then building our staff capacity to understand how to embed that instruction into. Our many co-talk courses that we offer. Um, so we'll be working on developing professional development for our teachers to attend this summer, both general education and special education teachers to work on co-planning. Embedding skills into content instruction and then how to kind of run a classroom with those couple of things going on at the same time. And then our third would be the implementation of a skills-based evaluative tool so that we can track student progress from. When they come into our school in their freshman year. In their progression of skills as they move through to either exiting or graduating. Um, and so that would really be driven by what our teachers are seeing in students in those classes. Each year as they're cycling through the four years of high school. That was a lot of information, so. Thank you for sticking with me.
That's, that is a lot of information, but thank you. So.
We want to just talk about applicant soup.
Yeah.
And and just.
Yes. Oh, so OT is occupational therapy. Um, OT works a little bit more on fine motor skills, executive functioning skills, visual organization is actually a piece of occupational therapy. Physical therapy is more of how our students are ambulating around the building. Um, how they are engaged in more gross motor movements. Uh, TVI is our teacher of the visually impaired, we have a contracted teacher of the visually impaired who comes and services a couple of students here. Um, she's engaged in working on material development. Um, and working one-on-one with our students in either braille instruction if it's necessary or. Kind of working on utilizing tech tools to help students access. Um. Their content through their tech if they're visually impaired, there's a ton of apps that that do some pretty amazing things. Um, and then O N M is orientation and mobility and O N M specialist specializes in. Helping students with visual impairments. Through the world, um, O N M is probably one of the most amazing professions, I think I never even had thought about it until I started working in special education. But, um, our O N M takes kids to the airport to practice traveling through an airport. Um, they take kids to the grocery store to practice independent shopping, um, all through the lens of visual impairment. And then our A, A A C specialist, sorry, wrong letter, flipped it up, um, is our assistive and augmentative communication specialist. Um, she typically works with our students in our transitions program who might not communicate the same way you or I would. Um, and so she's in building out. Um, actual tech programs to allow students to communicate via an iPad or another. Device like a Dynavox and then she's tweaking and in consultation with our occupational therapist is working on the motor plans that's that students need to ingrain to. Engage in the communication on their devices.
Thank you for that.
Of course.
I've been doing this a little while, but even some of those, to be honest, were new for me.
Yeah, O N M was a new one for me. Wow, yes. Okay, so I'm going to open up for anyone who has questions for Katie.
Real quick question, how many kids, you had a slide that showed the total kids involved?
Yep.
And I think that was one before this.
One sixteen, yes.
Okay, so then when you were tracking where they all, everybody goes on to?
Yes.
Who is that tracking? Because that's a much smaller.
Seniors.
Seniors, okay.
Yep.
This is everybody that was a graduate.
Thank you, that was my disconnect in my mind there.
This is everyone currently enrolled.
Okay.
And then, um, our population of seniors is much smaller, so it really is a hundred and sixteen divided by four is about what we have in each grade.
Okay, and was it less last year? Because it still looked like it was a very like skip, can you skip ahead to to this?
Yeah.
Being twenty-one?
Yeah, okay, so maybe a smaller class, but again, I'll get some of the others, like we've got ten, eleven. Like, are the numbers growing significantly?
Well, yes, everywhere. Um, you know, COVID has really changed the landscape of special education. And and a lot more referrals are coming up in in districts and and because kids are struggling. And so the question then becomes for IEP teams is to really think about and determine what is. Learning loss because of what happened for the past few years and what truly is an academic disability.
Okay.
Um. To mitigate and bolster some of those conversations, we've been working here and developing a really robust. SST process, which is Student Study Team Process, which looks at what are the tier one, tier two, tier three interventions and data. Prior to evaluating someone for special education. So are there things we can do through the lens of general education to support our learners? Before we bring them into and diagnose them with an educational disability.
And then one, one follow-up?
Go ahead.
In that group, are you including, and I can't remember what the name is, but you know, when when they have accommodations for say, mental health reason or something that does not.
Five oh four plan.
Five oh four, thank you.
Yeah.
Are the five oh fours included in that number? Because that's a whole different, that's a much more significant number once you add the man, right?
Yes, yes, the the difference in the kind of dividing factor between a five oh four and an IEP is. An IEP is really the need for specially designed instruction, so it's that piece of beyond accommodations. That give you access to the general education curriculum, what is the instruction? That needs to be provided by a certified person in order for you to make progress, so that's. So that's why those numbers aren't included with our special ed numbers.
Although I think it's worth, oh, sorry, there's no.
Promise, go ahead.
I think it is worth noting, and I just say this more for anyone who might be watching, if we've gotten someone online, that I know that some of the people like the school social worker are overlapping and doing services outside of what you just went through because they're also dealing with a lot of the five oh four situations and things like that. So there is some, there's overlap and coverage for those staff that's bigger even than this way might appear.
Yes, and, and our school psychologist also provides counseling services to students as well to help kind of mitigate that so we can give everyone what they need. So on top of evaluations, she also carries a caseload that she's counseling as well.
Can I ask you one quick question while you're on that topic? Ratios, so are there ratios you have to follow when you see like a BCBA and you have X number of kids in like a transition program? I'm assuming, and so I'm wondering as we increase number of students, is that?
So there isn't, to my knowledge, mandated ratios. Most school districts where I've worked, those ratios have been driven at times by union contract language of special education teachers may not have more than X number of children on their caseload or BCBA's may not have more than X number of children on their caseload. BCBA's being certified through the BACB, they love letters, have certain regulations for best practices and ethical requirements. So Jen Post, who is our BCBA, she and I stay in close contact in terms of what does that look like for your caseload? What does that look like for your programming? And so thinking through what those max numbers would be. However, I've worked with BCBA's with upwards of seventy kids on their caseload, so I'm not super concerned of us touching, touching the max of what she can do there because a lot of her services is provided in consultation with our ABA pair of staff who's servicing children directly.
Okay. Very good.
So thank you very much for coming in today.
Of course.
I think when we take a look as, as a community, this particular issue, the special ed portion of our district, offers the most mystery or mysterious kind of nuanced type things that people just don't necessarily comprehend or understand, especially when they see significant increases in the budget, right? And so a particular need of a student that's, you know, got something that's just beyond the scope of our local district, we're required to go ahead and pull outside resources to go in. And so I thank you for, for, for obviously doing all the stuff you did tonight to prepare. I do have a couple of questions with regards to the case manager piece.
Yeah.
If you can pull that up there real fast. So as a part of your constant reevaluation of, are we doing things the most effectively and efficiently?
Which one?
Next one over here. Oh, sorry.
That one.
Right there, so seven teachers and thirteen pairs with the case management component. I think one of the most common complaints about people that do this work is the case management piece. Because it takes them out of the classroom, the one-to-one time that's actually obligated to the student through the IEP through that process is just occupied by significant demands of the case management side. Has there been any thought from a school system standpoint to bifurcate that role out of the educator spot? So that teacher's constantly in the classroom, doing the one-on-one type attention, the instruction, the, the components of all the things that, that a student may need in an IEP, and then delegating the case management piece to, I don't want to call it an office worker, but someone that does that full-time. And so they're not interrupting the student's ability to receive services.
So there's a couple different, couple different schools of thought on that. Um, so there's, there's a component of if we were to delegate the paperwork components out to someone else, we would still be required to provide certified special education teachers to do that role. So there are some schools that have done things like have a cohort of special education teachers who are responsible for all those paperwork pieces and then a cohort of teachers who are responsible for the hands-on instruction in the classroom. And then through conversation and consultation between the two, that's where IEP development lies. What we currently work with in terms of practice right now is we look for overlap between a student's case manager and the class in which they are enrolled. So that there is both contact time to allow for the deep understanding for the IEP development piece and also that time in classes. In terms of what their schedule looks like, our special education teachers are supporting about four classes and running one academic support period, leaving them a similar number of preps as their general education counterparts to do the case management work and do those check-ins with, with students. And moving towards a more structured co-teaching model actually alleviates some of that, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul in terms of instructional time for paperwork time. Because what it allows case managers and special education teachers inside courses to do is to better recommend the exact amount of hands-on time that a student needs in that classroom and then structure themselves in terms of planning around when that need is going to be the most relevant. There are, you know, many different ways to cut a cake. And so I'm hoping that my group can do some research on, and I have like a whole stack of things that I need to move through in terms of what are the most effective models for special ed delivery for high school level students? Co-teaching is really one of, they say, the most effective in comparison to a model of like case management to one side, special education teacher delivering services in the classroom on the other. And however, through talking about workload and looking across, you know, how many places are special education teachers supporting? And how much contact time are we having in the classes? I'm already kind of having folks track, track that to ensure that we are both meeting our mandates, providing that instruction and developing really strong IEPs that meet student need. So we are doing a little bit of examining there. But with our numbers, our case managers have relatively small caseloads, I mean, most of them are under sixteen. So they do have a good chunk of prep time to be able to kind of get that IEP case management paperwork done and still allow them to be in the classroom full-time. So I haven't heard too many folks saying that they just don't have time to get all of those pieces in and done yet. I don't know if it's just new and they haven't told me yet, but so far, it's so good. Yeah, of course.
Anyone else? Any question?
Not a question, just more of a couple of comments. And first of all, great to see all this stuff. You know, it's been a while since we've seen some special education, that's not a knock on Meg, by the way, but you know, it's just good to really get a better glimpse of, of what's happening and where you want the whole program to go. And I think one of the things, at least in my time on the board, I'm sure others will probably echo is that one of the things that, that I'm proud of, of South Heagan is that the really awesome special education programs that it, it offers to its students. And I think, you know, that, that it's seen within the region, if not within the state, as one of the, the top programs. So great job and, and we look forward to seeing that continue to grow.
Kristi.
Sorry.
Yeah, Kristi Peters has.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry. Thank you so much. That was great. And I just wanted to go back really quickly, say, know that South Heagan has that model of inclusion within the classroom. And I wanted to hear your perspective on if you think that is working well and that's the best way to do it. But also, is it accomplishing that one goal of normalizing different learners and de-stigmatizing whatever might come along with that?
So, yes, I, I think having additional adults in classrooms and in a lot of classrooms working with all students really does help kind of normalize the fact that like, hey, we've all got some different things going on. A precursor to kind of layering in special education teachers into classrooms is the work that we're doing with tier one instruction, which really works on looking at what general education teachers can do to help craft various means for delivering their instruction in their classrooms and, and making it relevant for every single student depending on how they may learn. So as we build our, our familiarity and capacity with, with doing those practices, it will become much more prevalent that my, my old motto is always different kids are working on different stuff. And that will become more prevalent as we move through. Right now, most of our special education teachers are in, in general education courses, save for like one block every other day, full-time. And so they're in there and, and, and supporting kids. And the beauty of it is, you know, they're not just kind of like potting a group of, of special ed kids together and saying, we're all going to go and do some reading right now. You know, they're, they're kind of hopping around and, and working with everyone. And so it does, to your point, really kind of normalize that stigma of needing some additional support. To, to even further the efficacy of that, you know, the idea of co-planning is really where the rubber meets the road in, in deepening our practices, giving our general education teachers and their special education co-teaching counterparts time to do that thoughtful, individualized, personalized planning for the full inclusion of that general education class or to allow our students the full inclusion of that general education class is the next place that we need to go. But planning comes naturally to teachers. Co-planning is a little bit different. So we need to do some direct instruction with our teaching staff around what co-planning looks like and how to facilitate that. And Dana Curran and I are actually modeling a little bit of that for the faculty next week. So we're trying to help folks learn by modeling it for them, so.
Great. Any other questions?
Katie, thank you so much.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. It was very informative and, you know, just the one thing I want to keep everyone in mind, especially because we're in budget season, is, you know, special education, it is, seems like a mystery to everybody because it's, you know, we call it that black box. But what we're doing is required by law to meet the students' needs, to make sure they're fully educated in a least restrictive environment, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
So that's how we build our budget.
Yeah.
And we take care of our students, most importantly.
Well.
Also the right thing to do.
Right there's thing to do.
Well, if, if the mystery ever gets to anyone, my office is in the annex and I will gladly chat about any and all things special ed stuff.
Right.
Please come by anytime. You're welcome.
When IDEA was designed, it was supposed to be funded at forty percent.
Yeah.
And I think it's reached about sixteen percent from the federal government. And that's one of the issues and it's very, it's not a very often topic of campaigns and commitments, but forty percent funding of IDEA would change the world for public schools.
And a very small percentage of our student, students access a very large percentage of our recent financial resources. And so that's why transparency is always important of what is actually going on and, and are we critically examining to make sure that these are the, that the children are meeting the outcomes that we've set out for them at the beginning with the resources we're being given, so.
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Should be okay. Thank you. Okay. After that, let's see, okay, we're moving on to reports received, principals report. Mike, is there anything you want to do as a top level?
No, you know, we, as we submit the, the board report to the school board, we, we're, our attempt is to be as thorough as, as possible. And one of the things that I wanted to highlight is, or first, let me say this, there's, there's a lot of good things that happen in, in schools. And we try to capture that within the, in the report. And, you know, the role of the, the principal and the other administrators is to make life easier for the people doing the work. And so some of the stuff that is in there, so we can have our teachers and students be doing the good work, doing the hard work, and, and we just get the opportunity to highlight that. And, and some of the things in there, like, right now, I'm really impressed with how the teachers and the administrators are partnering together to do like the learning walks and the informal observations, the conversations before and after the formal observations. And there's actually more, you know, we were joking about this the other day. There's, there's far more visits, but Dan Curran's, you know, very clinical is the word I would use, and it's not, they're not fully completed in frontline. So there's probably another twenty or twenty-five-ish, you know, observations that are done. And the most important thing about the observations is the conversations that happen before and after the, the, the observation. And I think that is where the magic happens and, and, and the collaboration between teachers and admin. And, and that's our next, you know, for me, I keep saying that's, that's where we're putting our energies. And we talk a lot about tier one, you know, strategies that we can implement because, you know, to, to build off what Katie was saying, we want to do hard things. We want our students to build academic stamina and capacity and do hard things. And that's all kids, from the students that she just highlighted to students, you know, in classes. And to do that, you have to have a lot of good things in place. And hopefully the board report kind of highlights that. An area that I'm really, you know, into right now is the learning commons that we sit in here. It is each week becoming more and more of a habit for our students to be in this space. You're smiling, you know, like it's, it's a good space to be in. Yeah, it's, it's a good space to be in. Matt McDonald has done really well. Tara Pompeo has done really well in here. Joey McDeed is a math tutor, and we only see that improving. And, and, and that helps our kids have to do some, you know, we can increase the expectations with, you know, you know, grace periods and reassessment practices and late policies, but you got to put the systems in place. And so these are the areas that I think is, is going to move the needle and, and, and allow students to have the better, you know, best student experience that they can. So, so all kind of interconnected there. But I'll, I'll take any questions or anyone.
That's not really a question. It's just a request. You know the emails you send out every week with, here's the update that is available on the website? And I get that that's available on the website and we can go click on it on the website. Is there any way we can get back on, I can get back on those lists and anyone else here who's interested?
Oh, if you don't have kids.
Right. Like I stopped getting them when I, when my children graduated, which is fine. I mean, I understand that in the normal course of events, that'd be what happens, but I don't remember to always go to the website and look at is tonight or this week when it's going to be, you know, a concert or anything. And I think it would be great if like, I don't know, all the school board could be getting those parent, that main parent email about what's going on this week.
I'll look into that.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May regret it.
Yeah.
That's fine. What do you want me to sort of, that way you send out, like, this is what's happening, this is what's going on, this is what's, you know?
We can do that.
I like getting those.
I mean, I'm glad you like them. They're, that is a concerted effort. That is a lot of people meeting deadlines. And, you know, we have administrative assistant, Michelle Paul, who kind of takes the lead on that. And, and she's hawking people down to make sure that we include things. And, and then we partner with community, we have a community section now that people are starting to send us stuff, which we find pretty helpful. And a nice little piece of that is we, we upgraded the, the program. So now you don't have to click, you get it in a straight email, which improved the, you know, the amount, amount of views that we got, like doubled. Yeah, it doubled the first time we did that. Maybe they didn't read the whole thing, but at least they opened their email and saw the, the first thing.
Yeah.
So we're excited about that piece.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I did have two questions. The first one was the, the concept of the classroom walk-through, the classroom visit, the learning walks. So can you just walk me through what that looks like? So you and Dana or Dana and a domain lead may tell an instructor, hey, I'm coming in today between two and, and three, right? Just making that up, right?
Yeah.
That's ethical. And then they just filter in, sit in the back, watch, observe, and then leave?
Yeah, so learning walks are, are even more informal. It, it can be anyone. It could be myself and Steve have gone on Lurvin walks. And it is unannounced. And we do them like in September, October, while we're establishing rapport, getting everyone comfortable with adults being in. It's not part of the evaluative process. It's just us, and then we look for highlights and positives. And then we put it in writing and, and, and just say, hey, appreciate this. I saw this happening in your class and we really appreciate that. And, and we have things that we are looking forward to really highlight, to keep talking about it because we know it's good educational business, good instructional practice. So they're, they're really kind of low-level, low-hanging fruit. Now, the informal observations are still unannounced. You can just kind of go in, you stay a minimum fifteen minutes. Most of us stay between fifteen and thirty, depending. Now our formal observations, we, we, that is where you, and then after the informal, we always have a conversation. You know, we always say, hey, I was in your room, come, you know, let's find a time to chat. Whether we go to their room or they come to our offices and, and we, you know, give feedback on, you know, what we saw and we have a conversation about it. And and we, you know, give feedback on, you know, what we saw and we have a conversation about it. And teachers will kind of say, next time you come in, I'm looking at this area. Now, the formal observation is it's it's a little bit now, you know, more intense. You have a scheduled pre-conference, go through some things. You go, you sit for a full eighty minute period in the class, a commitment, and then you have a post conversation. And that's gets what's gets into frontline, the informal, formal.
And so your domain leads are only doing the the learning walks and the informal. And you as an administrator are doing the formals or domain leads doing the formals as well?
Yeah. So what we have is, we have, you know, the learning walks and the informals are done. We have people that we're assigned to. You know, so I have seven people that I'm the primary evaluator for. And I, they know we have a good rapport. And then like, so for example, Dana has nineteen people that she's responsible for. But I'm the I'm the second, and then we have a secondary person. So like, I have my primary, and then I have my secondary group. And we can go do informals with the secondary people. Learning walks, anyone can go anywhere. You know, I mean, it's just a culture. We want to work in public. We want to share observations. That's the partnership that we're trying to, we're creating and we are creating. And then, you know, domain leaders do formal and informal observations. But I think what you're getting at is if we ever had people that we were really, really concerned with, it would be myself and and Dana current. And just leave it at that.
Oh, great. That 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 helps quite a bit. Thank you. The next question I had was the power school and grading reporting. So in your report there, we talked about sort of working with teachers in October, getting all that stuff sort of updated, progress reports, college transcripts are being sent out. Is there some sort of way to make sure that the grades that are being updated or being updated more regularly than maybe some professors are doing right now?
Yeah.
Like there's delays, right?
There is, there's delays.
And you get all the way to the end and go, oh, my God, it's still the original score from October first. So is there a way to sort of better, like, maybe communicate that we can get that stuff more like?
I feel like you were in like the office talking about this dilemma we've had the last couple of weeks, right? You know, it is to have a consistent upgrading of grades is a is a battle that as an administrator, I've 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 been in to keep it consistent my whole life, you know. And, you know, what we, our recommendation i- is is first and fifteenth. Of every, you know, you update. And but what's happening with our grading and reporting system, you know, we put summatives in there and some of them don't happen as frequently as the formative assessments. And so there's a lot of work happening, but it's just not being entered into the system because what we're entering into the system, you know, mostly is some of this.
Those are the ones that get recorded as grades. The other ones might not be grade recorded. It's just work done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and so, but to your point, we can always improve on that.
Okay.
You know, and and that's a, that's a cultural thing. And so make note of that.
Is there, and and I'm gonna rely upon you, Steve, maybe you don't know, but is there a way in Power School that you can save grades as of and then a particular date? Showing the last time the grave was updated. So I can say, hey, my math class is a grade that's pretty static. But social studies is as of.
And and that came up before from a prior question from a parent that asked about that grace period too. So that four day grace one, if something has entered into Power School and they have that four day grace period to ask for a reassessment.
Yep.
We don't know when that four day starts.
It could be nice if it said pending, right? And said, so you knew that the clock was going.
That's the one does.
So so.
Okay, so that's a. Oh, okay. That's perfect.
Yeah. So I I will look into that, you know, to see, you know, kind of what we're doing, what the, you know, and the expectation of of people have been. And then I I'll get back to to Steve and he can get that to Stephanie.
Thank you.
That work, that's a fair question, but it's a, it's a struggle.
It was get better.
Yeah. Anyone else?
First, I just want to say thank you for the Veterans Assembly today. That was really well done.
Yes, and the all the credit needs to go to Marie Guerilla and John Balquet and and Sarah Gillum was the point of contact. And she, they, together, they put a a great great event on. And I thought the chorus sounded terrific. I thought the band sounded really clean and a hard, it was a hard song to perform. And I thought Sarah closed it really eloquently.
Yeah.
So it was a nice event.
That was nicely done.
Oh, that was, that was.
Instead of having it played, having it sung was, that was neat.
Yeah, it was different.
Yeah.
I didn't expect that.
It's good.
Yeah, it was good.
One question, so I know you noticed, you noted cell phone usage, which I know is a a battle amongst all schools everywhere. So the teachers are trying to come up with solutions, a community council working with Tim on that, or does he have a subcommittee or something more? Okay. And then hopefully they all get together.
So I I will tell you this, the, we had a, an opportunity for students to go meet with the dean of students and it was scheduled and and not any showed up. You know, for that, it was, we wanted more than just community council kids to weigh in on it. And so then Tim is forming in the process of forming it, staff steering is kind of gathering information. And we hope what we're gonna do is get, you know, there's a, there's more work to come. There's a survey that's going to be released to students next week and filled out during advisory. Spotlight, we're highlighting some things there for for the students. And then after we gather data from the students and and the families, you'll probably see the committee of Tim and the staff steering kind of come together and create. You know, we're not really gonna get a policy around cell phones. What we're gonna do is we're gonna have some common expectations that are agreed upon. And and then gives teachers some tools and strategies as it becomes a distraction to learning. And 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 how to interact, you know, with students. It's a problem. It's a real problem. And and we want to, you know, go about it in a real thoughtful manner that's respectful of all parties, you know, and and, you know, I think getting parent input and family input and and student input, you know, is 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 really important. And so we're gonna continue to do that. And and I hope by the mid semester point, we have some agree, common agreements and I have the expectations that as a school, we try to to work towards. But really, you know, we're coming to it from a, you know, a real empathetic place of it's a, it's meant to be addictive. Your phone is meant to be intended to be addictive. And, you know, so then we have to figure out the why. And the why for me on my phone could be a lot different than than Rolfs, could be a lot different than than yours. And so we gotta figure out that and just understand like, some people can really function well by being on their phone. And then some people, they can't. And so we just got to be honest about what the behavior is for the individual. So we're coming at at that angle. It's not coming in from like a a policy or a punitive standpoint. But I do think it's telling that when we open to have conversations around cell phones, people aren't really willing to jump in and give input and to take from my advisory. We don't want anything to change. Right? We're good. But we know as adults and educators, we can be better in this area. And not every text she answers from your mom. Right? So. Yeah, I'm pretty sure of that. Yeah, we'll work on that.
A lot of hard work, I'm sure, and collaborative. So thank you. Christie, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? So we'll move on. Okay, treasures report. Any questions? Amy, I just noticed there were a couple of old checks there like April or whatever. I don't know if someone can just check into those and.
Yeah. Had a few things going on.
Okay. We'll get there. That's if they're not crises. Yeah, it's no problem. Facilities update. Any questions? Other than Roger, thanks again for maintaining our buildings and keeping things in check. Thank you. Okay, so the reports consent agenda, let's go one by one, because I know there's some policy things. I don't know if there's any questions. Any questions on draft minutes? Any changes? No. Okay. The policy packet in there? Anna, do you wanna? Says first read on. Oh, yeah.
Thirty-six.
Yep. Let me scroll down to it. Yep. On thirty-one. So the only I did just so everyone know, go to the last PPC meeting. And we worked through several of the ones that are not here yet and we're all getting some feedback on some additional changes. And then we've got some others. So there'll be a bunch of stuff that comes and I'll try to put together a packet for that. Just so everyone know where we are at the next meeting on those. Those are not these. I I think GB, so first off, I think they're all second reads. I think you're right. This is like the copy from before. And if we look at page thirty-eight, I believe all the ones that are highlighted in yellow on page thirty-eight are the ones we just need to do second read on. In the packet is a copy of GBEBB. But that was when we discussed back in September had actually already been passed and should have been pulled, but it's not in the list. So I don't think that matters, but I just wanted to point that out because we've got one, the list, and then we've got some documents afterwards. So it's
Yeah, just, but the GB, as long as it's not in the list here, BCEK through.
It's just randomly in there. We don't, these other ones that we reviewed have no board action. We already talked about. And as far as I'm concerned, those can just come off of these agendas altogether.
Yeah.
Looking through, I'm on the second page of them right now. The emergency policy for protective, personal protective measures, we already rescinded that.
Rescinded that.
Again, that's this, GBCDR. I don't think we're doing anything with that. I'm pretty sure or I'd recommend that we do nothing with that. Because I'm pretty sure it's part of the one, it's the list of the ones we went through with them, but I don't have that note with me right now. So sorry, I'm not prepared to do that. And then the last two. We can GBGGA, if we could just table that one as well. But I I think we could.
Only the highlighted ones in the packet.
Right. And those should all be a, all the ones that are highlighted in the packet should be a second read.
Second read. This is the copy over from the first time. Yeah.
So with that caveat, and if that's, as long as that's what everyone understands the consent agenda to mean that all the highlighted ones on page thirty-eight are the ones we're presenting for second read. We can, we can move ahead with that. And that's all I have.
So does anyone have any comments on any of those policies that are highlighted? BCEK, BEC, BEDG, BDH, BGA, ABHC, DAF, EBCG, GEE, AEA, IHBA, JICC, JICD, JICDA, or JLCJA.
Well done.
Thank you.
Well done.
Any questions on any of those or comments? Okay, so Christie, do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. One, JICDA.
JICDA, yes.
Is the one. So maybe we need to do something with that. Is the one that's a duplicate of GBEBB. So that's probably why GBEBB is already in there.
Oh, is that the one that we took?
Now, that was one that GBEBB was one that you all passed before I was on the board, but like fairly recently.
Yeah.
So I thought we had a discussion when these first came up for first read that that one should have been.
Which one is it again?
Hold. JICDA. Appears to also be GBEBB. Hold on, let me scroll back up to that page. Saw that GBEBB was still in there, but I had missed that it is apparently the same as JICDA. Let me check the website real quick. Yeah, we renamed, we renamed it. We just did the JICDA slash GBEBB, right? So maybe that we're just passing it and leaving it in for the renaming, in which case, that's fine.
Yeah, because we wanted to keep it in the G policies, but everyone else has it labeled as a JICDA. So we just, we're renaming it.
Perfect.
So do you want a motion to?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the policies as stated and highlighted on page thirty-six.
Mister.
As presented.
Oh, I have thirty-eight, page thirty.
I'm on page thirty-six.
Oh. I think you may be operating off of the old agenda. I got thirty-eight too.
Okay.
Isn't it part of the consent agenda? So.
It is. That's right. You're never mind. You're right. We're gonna do as part of the whole consensus, as long as there's no comments. Christie Peters, do you have any comments on any of the policies? Just to double check.
I don't think you.
Okay. The, all right, so we'll look at the field trip application for Costa Rica. I mean, first of all, very exciting. We're getting trips back. This is a great trip put put on by a couple of our teachers that there, I love the idea. They're going to do community work. They're gonna be living in the community as well as traveling and learning about the culture. So language, any questions on that? Just any concerns, Mr. Gansha?
And no real questions other than this has always been a pet peeve of mine. I always thought, well, I I shouldn't say I always thought, I thought that recently we had an extended field trip that had a great executive summary at the beginning. And this one doesn't have that. So I was like, you know, and I'm looking at the form, it's not even so I think the extent, the executive summary was a, hey, you should do this. And it was done on that particular one. And then it went away because it never went in to the policy.
We need to redo the form.
We, we had, Mike and I work on the forums. My apologies. I remember that before. The cracks work on the forum with an executive summary at the beginning. So thank you for that note.
If you if you use that other one as that as a model, I thought that came, that was great.
Yeah.
And then I, when I saw this one, what the heck's my information?
Music trip.
You like the music?
Yeah, had that, had a real nice, short.
Yeah, I remember that. I apologize.
Yeah.
It's okay.
I don't think I did that.
About that, give me a heads up. Thanks. Appreciate you right now. Remember that guy too.
All right. I also liked that they don't miss class for.
You saw the notes this morning and highlighted that.
Once, once I hunted down the dates, I realized it wasn't during school time.
Yes.
Sorry, kind of late, very early.
Yes, no, this is good.
I'm busy.
Okay, so if there's no questions on the consent agenda, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda. Mr. O'Keefe, have a second?
A second.
Mr. Gansha, second. Since Christie is on Zoom, we'll have to do a roll call vote. Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Bronster, yes.
Grund, yes.
Hey, you, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, yes, Christie.
Peters, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, community council update, Ralph.
All right. So on Monday, community council passed a proposal written by Matt McDonald that requested funds of up to six hundred dollars for materials to paint murals of some sort. In the learning comments, these are projects that he's actively working with students on to get approved through the proper process. There's a whole separate process of like making a board to approve a certain mural. So we've approved that proposal. We'll be giving him up to six hundred dollars worth of art supplies. And hopefully he'll have that done in the next few months. We also started discussing a proposal that was brought to us by by Karen Chinenis, actually. And she is requesting that community council sponsors one student annually for basically, how do I, sorry. So he can send a group of students to a conference called the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Foundation. It's an like seminar that happens over the weekend. We send students to a college nearby usually because they have the appropriate dorming facilities. And they spend the weekend meeting and talking about how they can be active leaders in their community and make a positive impact on the world. So this proposal was brought to us. So this proposal was brought to us, um. I think two weeks ago, and we kind of overlapped the two proposals because they're similar and we can get them voted on at the same time roughly. Um. We would only be funding, uh, the attendance for one student, but so far it seems like we, we seem light to the idea.
Yeah, yeah, I know what there's four. Positions, I guess. I think Karen said, like, if students could go, but there is.
Yeah, this year, um, they're accepting four students from each school, uh, to attend the seminar.
Hoby.
Oh, yeah.
So is the idea to, like, provide a scholarship to someone who might need assistance to go? Or how does, how does it, how do we decide? And how does the community council decide which student gets the scholarship?
Uh.
Or the, the funding?
My understanding is that it's going to be a merit-based scholarship for who we think is going to be the most active or benefit the most from the seminar. Um, there's going to be an interview process. I unfortunately missed the meeting Monday. I don't know the exact.
Yeah, there's a, there'll be an interview process and, um, who gets the scholarship, I think is going to end up being determined by guidance is my understanding. Um, once the interview, interview process are. Happens.
And, um, additionally, community council is working on actually building our CRB and J Board for this year. Uh, we're looking at. Hopefully revising it a bit so that it's one body that is actually handling these student disciplinary appeals. Um, that's probably going to be a proposal that's coming within the next month or two, and I'll have more details for you as that comes.
Okay. Great. Yeah, they are an active bunch. Lots of, yeah, it's, it's impressive going to community council and listening, listening to the kids speak up about where they feel, how, how they feel. Uh, like even the scholarship, how this should be one. They give really good opinions and thoughtful. Yeah, it's great. Thank you. Okay, so I think we actually get to move on.
To our budget.
Yay.
Yay.
Amy has draft two.
I do. Alright, so draft two. Just go to the next page. Budget review. So. Um, a few things have, yep, so a few things have changed. Uh, we have the, just the executive summary that shows the. Budget comparison from the FY twenty-three, operating budget to the FY twenty-four proposed budget draft two. Um, and a, as we did last time, in order to make sure we get a true comparison of operating budget to operating budget. We back out the eighty-five thousand transfer, um, for, for the turf field revolving fund. So by doing that, we have an overall, uh, increase of three percent of that difference. Uh, the, between FY twenty-three operating and FY twenty-four default, default, it's negligible. Um, it's less than six thousand dollars. So therefore the difference between the twenty-four default and the twenty-four proposed is also three percent. So to go over the changes from draft one to draft two. Uh, primarily, the salary adjustments were for adding time back for. Paraprofessionals who lost time during the school start and end time change. So there were eleven paras that we added fifteen minutes back. Um, for, for next year. So that's, uh, for salary and benefits. Uh, we also did a market rate adjustment for our chef manager. So there was an increase in that. And then there were some other, um, adjustments up and down that you'll see in the budget file, uh, draft two. Uh, the benefit changes are due primarily to, we received our rates from Primex for workers' comp and unemployment comp. And we had a nice reduction in the unemployment, uh, compensation. The mileage reimbursement for CTE students. That was something that was brought up during one of the budget committee meetings that we had missed. So, um, thank you for that. So. Based on current year students, um, we did a, a, a projection for, um, for budgeting for next year. So the way the CTE program is working. We have, uh, one program in Nashua that is pretty comprehensive and most students are able to, uh, take advantage of that. We have a van, um, and someone who drives the students to that program. However, there are other programs, um, in neighboring towns that students are able to access. And if they drive themselves, then we, we reimburse them per mileage.
We get some federal support for that too. So we get some revenue associated with that expense.
Um, and then the property and liability insurance that did go up. Um, really just due to, uh, increases due to higher than expected general liability, property auto, uh, et cetera. The SAU assessment was adjusted based on the calculated apportionment for FY twenty-four. And so the total changes, uh, were not too significant, but an increase of twenty-two thousand nine oh six. And this is the default calculation. Um, so this just shows the change from the FY twenty-three. To. Uh, the FY twenty-four, or from the FY twenty-three adopted in order to calculate the FY twenty-four default. So again, we start with FY twenty-three. We back out the turf field Warren article. Um, any one-time expenditures, that was just a small expenditure. Um, for some new, uh, new equipment. There was another expenditure that was in there from last time. That really wasn't deemed as a one-time, so we, we did not back that out, um, in this draft. We adjusted for student services, uh, not for non-salary. Included the SAU assessment. Um, adjusted for other salaries and employer-paid benefits. So there were some decreases in that line. Uh, food service was, is, is an increase, but again, that is offset by revenue. And then there was an, uh, an additional contractual charge. So the total change is just five thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. So pretty flat between FY twenty-three adopted and FY twenty-four default. Next slide. And this just shows the proposed budget calculation. So again, the, the difference is the, uh, five ninety-five eight oh two, and this just breaks it out by the budget. Uh, ways and means. Uh, not ways and means. Advisory Finance Committee categories. Um, curriculum is five forty-four, seven twelve, facilities one seventy-three, six forty-eight. Athletics, about thirty-four thousand, student services. Eighteen thousand five ninety-two. There was a question during the subcommittee if we could include those in the default. This is for special ed Medicaid billing, um, and some advertising. So we really saw that more as an administrative function and not really student-related. So we weren't, we didn't feel comfortable pulling that out. Um, food service, transportation, technology, and admin, um, were all decreases. So the difference between the default and the proposed is the five ninety-five eight oh two. And then this just is that familiar, um, slide that breaks out all of the, uh, the budget items. By the Advisory Finance Committee categories. Um. And demonstrates the total change in the budget from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, which is the six oh one, seven twenty-seven. So you can see transportation is the highest change. We had, uh, increases in the special ed transportation that is mainly driving that. Facilities, we're adding some staff. Um, curriculum, there's a variety of things, but salaries and. Um, and other, and support staff, athletics, that is mostly due to the, um. Uh, the trainer. Um.
Contract and service to.
Yep, yep. Food service, some small changes. Admin, um, went down. That was mostly due to changing of the account code lines. And then student services, we did have a reduction in, um, in staffing. And. Uh, technology, again, some reductions. So the total change is three percent. So that's the, the budget. Um, and then we have a kind of a deep dive into facilities. So, as you know, um, so Hegan Building and Grounds Committee has been meeting. Uh, Roger has done some extensive work looking at the current capital needs assessment plan and doing a refresh. So that's what this slide represents. So right now, uh, we, after, after we pay, after we. Um. Draw down funds from the reserve for projects that have recently been completed. We'll have a balance going forward of three eighty-five. Um, in order to complete programs that the superintendent and building and grounds and Roger have identified as. Being a high priority, uh, specifically the Skylight project. Uh, we will need to, uh, in, increase the contribution. From, uh, from the, um. Reserve to two hundred and twenty thousand. So that we can have funds to be able to withdraw and pay for the Skylight project in FY twenty-four. As well as some furniture replacement that, uh, building leadership has deemed to be a priority. So this slide really shows all of the projects year by year. The contributions that, um, we need in order to be able to complete those projects. The amount of funds that it will take to complete them and then the balance that we will have. And, uh, we, we want to make sure that we have enough funds in there to take care of something should there be an emergency. So this, uh, sheet shows that we're actually able to keep, keep that and sustain that balance. So this plan is also an attachment in the table of contents. So you can go in and take a look in more detail into Roger's plan, but this is, this is a consolidated version.
So FY twenty-six, Roger's not going to like the one thousand below the two hundred.
Probably not. Yeah, we, we tried to, we're, yeah.
Big things that fail and that's the reason that.
It's the boiler fun, apparently, so.
A hundred per building. So the two buildings, so he's giving us a break there.
Yep, but it was, he, you know, did some really good work in looking at the current capital needs. Understanding that, you know, we want to keep our building watertight and moving things around to be able to, to accomplish that.
Excellent.
Yep, yep. So then I also wanted to, um, have the board consider all of the reserve funds and. Have you start to take a look at what your balances are and, um, and talk about some of the recommendations for. Uh, increasing those, some of those funds. So first up is the property maintenance fund that we were just discussing. The balance is three eighty-five. The original planned contribution, um, request from the CNA was a little under eighty-five thousand. And as I said, we are going to be recommending, um, to increase that to two twenty for this year. Uh, and the source, uh, for that, uh, request right now would be unassigned fund balance. Uh, for the turf field revolving fund, we have a balance of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Uh, we've typically in the past done an eighty-five thousand dollar contribution request. You can also see Roger's work on this turf field in that same document. That's, um. A link on the front page of the budget file, and he feels comfortable with reducing that request for next year to seventy thousand. For, yeah. And for technology, this is a new fund that came up. Uh, I believe it was during budget. Yeah, so. This is something that, you know, we've talked to Brian about. Um, Steve and I both had a few conversations. And a lot of other districts do this to really ensure that we have some funds on hand should something major break. Um, or, you know, just something un- unanticipated. So. We're just, you know, requesting a relatively small amount, but hoping to build that up to maybe seventy-five or a hundred thousand over a few years. So requesting twenty-five thousand. Um, so enough, Steve, I know you talked.
I think we were trying to talk about streamlining the expenses, just like the, the, uh, building and grounds, trying to do a similar idea with. So we're technology, not buying a big server one year and nothing the next year and this and that, and we can plan.
And so Roger's, uh, uh, sorry, Brian's world is servers and switches. Um, servers right now, they are shared, um, because they're really, SAU shared, they're large enough, they're shared. But the switches, for example, he's got four switches that are about eighteen thousand dollars each. Um, and they're about three years away from the expected life. So trying to, um, build some reserves. So if they all go at once, that's a big hit on the budget. But, um, what, uh, what, I really appreciate what Amy's done. Um, Amy's talked and, and, and with Brian to really create a Roger-esque. Like a plan for every device, every even share points, the projectors and all the pieces going out. So we can really look at a much, a, a planned contribution withdrawal to this fund and even it out over time. And so for the next, and you know, Brian is relatively new at this gig and, um, we've, we've all gone to Roger's school about. The projections of every single aspect of the world. So I think you'll see. Uh, a facility light, but it will be very, it'll be patterned after the, the next budget cycle of a technology replacement plan. That will, uh, list really the year contributions, your withdrawals based on to keep the budget as even as we can. Uh, and some in reserve. So the twenty-five thousand gets the start of the board supports it. Um, and with really just the back of the envelope, we're looking at about seventy thousand dollars in three or four years. So it'll build to try and even that out. But next year we'll have a much more comprehensive besides just switches. And servers, it'll also include the points, it'll all include the projectors and, and all the aspects.
We know it's coming.
Yeah, and, and this is something that Advisory Finance has asked for, for a while. Um, and I see Mr. Gordon out there smiling. So we're, we feel really good about our facilities program. We want to try to get our technology, um, program at the same level so that we can have, uh, you know, a really good idea. Over a five-year period of, um, of what we need to do. And I would say other items. Uh, such as furniture and fixtures is, is, I would, we would want to have that as well. So. Um, so we are working on that. Um, for your student with disabilities fund, you have a balance of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So in talking with Meg and Steve, we feel that that, um, is, is fine for now and would not recommend a contribution. Request for that. You also have an unfunded liabilities retirement fund, um, of fifty-four thousand. So I did some digging and, and. I know. I, it's, it's been there for a while. It's, it's old. I, I don't know the exact date. I can, I'm sure I can find the old Warren article, but. Um, but that is there.
Is that the fund if we choose to give extra retirement out? Is that what that's for? Or what's the liability for?
Weird title.
Yeah.
It is a weird title. So, um.
The, the state changed the Gatsby requirements and required reporting. That every district's unfunded part of the New Hampshire retirement system. And it's a big, when that happened, it scared a lot of communities because there's, there's a piece of what we owe. Every school district owes a million dollars or more of unfunded liability based on the state retirement system. Um, and it's just the requirement of Gatsby was we had to be honest with the community that this was part of it. So right now. The district pays eighteen, nineteen percent, right? And that's, that size of that is taking part of the unfunded liability because for years it was underfunded. And, but I've never seen a district put money away for that. This, this would be new and exciting to me. Um, because you don't have to, you're up to, but we just have to acknowledge it because we're required to pay it through the state contribution.
Right.
Which is higher than it would be if we didn't have it. So we are compelled to do it.
We, we may need to find out, you know, sort of the parameters of how this was.
Those funds.
Yeah, what was the wording that was created?
I wonder if it went back to, there was a year, there was a budget year. Where we had to prepare the budget and we didn't know what the state's retirement contribution was for retirement. We created a contingency fund back in that two thousand eight, two thousand nine, just in case they dropped. And it was. So it was thirty-five percent that year. And there was rumor that the state was going to come back at fifteen and we'd have to pay more. And I was at a meeting and I said, well, they would never go to zero. They went to zero. So we use the contingency fund to pay for the gap that we had. So I mean, I wonder if, I wonder if that year was, it would have been two thousand eight, nine.
Yeah, we need to find that original wording.
Yes, I, I, I'm sure I, I can find it through. The DRA portal or, and looking at some of, like Betty's old files.
Yeah, they have the old pamphlets.
Yeah.
Because you can ask the community to liquidate that.
Yeah.
And take it as revenue. Because you can ask the community to liquidate that fund and take it as revenue this year.
Oh.
Um, we, we had our old health insurance trust, um, that changed when we went to the tax base stabilization fund. We no longer needed it, so we asked the community to, the community has to support liquidate, but then it becomes revenue.
Okay.
Um, and it goes to offset taxes if you, but we'll have to take a look at, I bet you that's what it was.
Okay.
When the state was messing with.
So we'll figure it out and have it ready for when we talk about revenue. Thank you. Yeah. I know, I, it, yeah. All right. All right, so next, um. I know you got excited. We're close. So then this is really just a summary slide of all of the appropriations that we're discussing. So the operating budget changed from twenty-three to twenty-four, three percent. Uh, that capital reserve fund that we're looking to ask for the two hundred and twenty thousand out of unassigned fund balance, the turf field reduction from eighty-five to seventy. Um, also from unassigned fund balance and then that technology fund that we discussed from zero, um, that, a, a new fund uh, for twenty-five thousand. So the total change in, uh, requested appropriation is eight thirty-one, seven thirty-seven or four point two percent.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And then this is just our budget review process and next steps. I highlighted where we are um, in the process, so this is draft two. There's a budget workshop scheduled for next week. Um, we'll have draft three in early December. There's the opportunity for another budget workshop if we feel that that's needed. Public hearing in January, uh, deliberative in February and voting in March. So we had, I think we had really good subcommittee meetings. Really good questions from board members, from committee members. The committee has met several times and they're here tonight to, um, give an update. They've done a lot of work. They met last night. I was not able to attend, um, apologies. I had a, a other SEU business. But, um, but yeah, they've, they've done a great, a great job and we'll continue. We're, we're not done yet, but. And I know we have draft two and you guys have done your analysis on draft one, sorry. But, um, yeah, so any, any questions? And then I think we would, we'd want to invite the Advisory Finance Committee to.
Before questions, I just want to clarify, so Amy said, because I asked her, uh, the things we're requesting from unassigned fund balance.
Yeah.
She's going to give us most likely in next month.
Yeah.
An update on that, so we know we have the money there to actually request it from the other side. We'll see.
So yes, we will, we will have, it's going to be very preliminary, but it's going to give us an idea. Well, we will have our projection. Um, it, it makes me nervous.
Yes.
Giving it so early.
It'll be early.
I know, sorry. But, um, but yes, we will, we will have a projection. And I know it's, it's difficult because you have to make a decision on whether to do, you know, right, to have a warrant article raised for taxation or whether to go with unassigned fund balance. So we'll give you the most up-to-date information that we can.
I will say, in terms of the voter guide, potentially produce for the public. The slide that actually showed all the various maintenance benchmarks and dates, that has to go in there. Because to support those particular items, it's very important for the community to understand, this is what it's for. This is exactly what we're looking for. I know I'm over and we did that pretty regularly.
Yep.
People liked it, they enjoyed it, and to be honest, we really appreciated it, so.
So this, yep. I stole this slide from my Mont Vernon presentation.
I think we used it for the first time in Sohegan.
We did.
We loved it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's so important that people know, oh, that's why, that's why.
Yeah.
They can, that's a big bill.
Yep.
So.
Very helpful.
Yep.
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
John has his handout.
So I just want to say, yeah, John Glover just joined us via Zoom.
Um.
I tried to move him to panelist, but he's refused. Maybe, uh, say he's. All right, now he's accepted.
All right.
He'll be there and there he is.
So John, I just, because you're joining us right now, I just want to, can you clarify that you're unable to be here in person and if you are alone?
Uh, yes and yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, board members, any questions for Amy right now?
Yeah.
So not having been to a budget workshop before, um, what do we need to do before Tuesday night for the budget workshop?
So the, I'm glad you asked. So the budget file has been updated. That's what I was feverishly doing while you were discussing other business. So, um, we have draft two in there. We have a variance report from draft one to draft two.
Yeah.
We have a new budget calculation and the tabs have all been updated based on draft two.
Okay.
So I would say, go ahead and review, um, the different subcommittees. Take a look at the overall budget, look at the default, um, take a look at the personnel and look at the questions that have been asked. And really, it's for the board to decide if there are other items that they want us to look at that you want to consider, um, increasing, decreasing, whatnot. So it's really just an overall review of the budget, so. And if there are questions ahead of time that you want to put in there, we'll, we'll try to get those answered as well.
And it's. And thank you, when, so he can finance, I kind of, what, I want to just ask, can, can we get the reports that your committee writes up, sent out to the board members? Because those are just great summaries of things that were discussed during those.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, those budgets. So if I, I, I know I have the copies, ones that were sent through email, but I don't, if you want to put together one email with them all in there and then I can forward that. That's John, but John, we'll work. I'll get that for you. Oh.
Okay, yeah. Yep. Any other questions, uh, John or Christie, do you have any questions?
I do.
Yes, John.
Um, three things. The, uh, skylights on that, uh, slide was tagged as FY twenty-four for phase one. I think, as I recall in our J-FAC meeting the other day, Roger was really looking. Uh, yeah, FY twenty-four, Rogers, um, we really wanted to know whether we could pull that trigger this fiscal year, like by December so that the appropriate plans and specifications could be drawn up and that the custom skylights could be ordered. I think he said it would take four months um, to build those and that we could put those in really this fiscal year. And so is that a, is that?
So, John, thank you, the, uh, the, the order, hoping to get board approval to order, uh, in December, so we can order in January to have them made and be ready to be installed in July and August. So exactly when we will be billed on that, exactly what the work, you're right, the approval is going to happen in FY twenty-three. The work is going to happen after July one in FY twenty-four. So exactly when the billing will occur, the billing may actually be, may be in FY twenty-four. But you're right, we have to order early to get them prepped and ready to go.
Well, and that, that likely would require at least some kind of deposit. I, all I'm saying is that phase one estimate was about three hundred thousand. Our balance is three eighty-five. We have the funds now and it's really kind of an urgent need. Um, and so, I mean, I'm eager to approve that because it's a, it is such an urgent need. It's a safety hazard, there's a lot of problem, I mean, water intrusion can damage not only slips and falls, but also can, you know, get into electrical systems and all, all kinds of havoc. Um, so I, I would look to, to accelerate that phase one, um, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and I don't know if Roger is there, but, and I, I didn't ask him the other day, but, but maybe just to put it on the record and maybe you can ask him, is there anything that he can do now to put a Band-Aid over these things so that when we get into the winter especially and freezing and thawing and I just, it could be really bad if, if there's no cover or something to be able to put over these things to, to prevent leaking in the short term until we can get the, the, the skylights replaced, the ones that are leaking badly.
Yeah, thank you. He has, he has, uh, his Band-Aid, I think is pretty close to an a- accurate description of what he's got, he checks on it regularly, but yes, there is a short-term, um, mitigation strategy there that he checks on frequently. But thank you, and I think Band-Aid's a pretty good description.
Okay, great. And then could you go to the next slide? Yeah. Uh, I, I like the, uh, idea of the technology fund. That's, that's, that's great. Um, and I agree that that's something that Sohegan Advisory Finance has been asking for, plans, long-term plans. Will there be a, something equivalent to a capital needs assessment done to kind of an inventory? A baseline where we stand, what the equipment is, um, so that we can really map it out like, uh, Roger has done with the facilities?
Yes, John, that was, that is going to be done and that's something Brian's working on now. We'll have more details probably either later, probably next year, we'll have more details for more of a five-year, ten-year plan or how that's going to look, but we're going to start now.
Right.
Yeah, Roger has, uh, has, has been, um, the expectations have been, um, explained. Uh, he's enthusiastic to jump on board about facilities light, not necessarily facilities equal, but facilities light, but have all the information that will help planning. You, you bet.
And Roger's is willing to spend some time to kind of school, uh, uh, educate, um, Brian as to how to do that and work those spreadsheets and so he, so that Brian is proficient at doing that technologically.
Very much so. Um, that's Roger's wheelhouse. He's, he loves that. He likes showing me as well.
That's great. And then finally, um, I liked what you said, uh, Steve Chamberlain about maybe liquidating the unfunded liabilities, uh, fifty-four thousand. Because it's required by law, so it, by, you know, it's going to end up in the default, no matter what the liability is. But rather than sending it back as revenue, it's just been sitting there. I wonder if we could use it to, to fund the technology fund in the first instance and then maybe throw the balance into the maintenance fund, um, and distribute it among funds that we know we're going to need.
I think you can. I think you can direct the funds. Um, I know Amy has peeps at the DRA. Um, that will support her, but I think, John, I think you're right. I think you can ask to, um, uh, tran- actually transfer, I don't know exactly the language, but that's a DRA piece. But yes, and, and we'll, we'll dig in deep to make sure it's the right thing to do, but I agree. My suspicion is that asking the, uh, community to liquidate this would be the, uh, best fiduciary approach to this, uh, funds that they can be better used in the other places. So thank you.
Yeah, so rather than send it back as, as tax offset, I would just say, we already have these requests out, we might as well fill, you know, fill part some of these buckets with it, if, if we, if we can do so. I think that would be, community would support that.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Christie, you have any questions?
I think I'm on that thing.
Great. I know, I'm looking forward to our budget workshop. Those are always fun.
It's wild.
We are, crazy numbers. So, Sohegan Finance Committee, Jeannie, do you want to come forward? Joel, I don't, what? Come. He can come join you if you'd like.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm Jeannie Lou from Amherst and I'm the chair of the Finance Committee. So, um, I, I just wanted to say that we had a very productive meeting last night where we shared all of our reports. I call it a sort of a roundup of, uh, function reports. Um, it was especially useful to have, um, I was sorry that Amy couldn't be there, but, uh, fortunately, uh, Mike and, um, Galen, um, were there and, and of course Stephanie, um, and Dan were there to, um, answer a lot of our questions. Um, so that, um, you know, part of the effort was, um, to hear all the reports and then for us to ask questions about the individual functions, um, with the idea of taking them back to be answered. But fortunately, we were able to get all of our answers last night, so that was great. I did want to let you know that I have the archives in my house of the, uh, voter guides that go back to two thousand. So I'd be happy to look into see when.
Thank you.
Um, I actually have loaned it to, to, uh, Shannon, yeah. So I have to get it back from her, but I'm, I'm happy to check it out. I, I think you're right about it being around two thousand eight or nine. Um, and I'm pretty sure it was because we were fearful that we wouldn't have enough, um, not knowing who was going to retire. Um, and so we wanted to have a little cushion. But it's sort of, I guess it's.
It's interesting.
Sort of got lost in the, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Amy, for.
Yeah. So, uh, our next step is, of, of course, to attend the workshop. Um, and I'm not sure there's going to be anything quite as controversial as there was last year. Um, you know, it's, at least nothing has surfaced quite yet, um, among, um, the folks on our committee. Not, that's not to say something might not, but, um, so I think it'll, it'll probably be, uh, you know, a pretty, we may not have to attend more than one workshop is what I'm thinking. Um, and the other question that I have is, do you anticipate that the draft three is going to be dramatically different from draft two or?
No, I think we, we caught some things from one to two and we've done a pretty thorough review. So I don't anticipate a lot of changes unless the board directs us to make changes.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, so do you have any questions for us? I guess is. Okay, okay.
No.
Joel, anything you want to add?
I have one, which is, uh, satisfied overall, dissatisfied overall.
Uh, in, in what respect, John? Uh, with, with the process or?
Well, no, not the, well, hopefully the process has smoothed out from last year, but you know, you like the direction it's going. Are there any major controversies or outstanding concerns that need to be hashed out, um, at the budget workshop? Or, or is it feeling like it's going in the right direction?
Hey, John, this is Joel Gordon, also from Amherst.
Hey, Joel.
This is my fourth year on the, uh, Finance Committee and this presentation this year and the, the numbers behind it were much clearer than they have been in the past. They were much more easier and transparent to understand. And so the review process, at least from my perspective, has been significantly less burdensome. Um, and you know, Amy, great job putting it together and, and to Mike and, and Steve and, and company um, for telling the story behind what the numbers are all about, which is something that for the last three years we've been looking for is to get a more, uh, be able to understand what the direction and policy of the school is and be able to line that up with the budget. And I think, I think we're there. So I'm pretty happy about that.
I do, I do think that, um, that the, those voices have been heard and that, um, you, you all have responded appropriately and we, we appreciate that greatly. As far as the process has gone this year, I, I'm very satisfied. I think it's, um, gone very smoothly and, um, I appreciate the fact that we have been, um, included in these conversations um, at the, at the board, uh, meetings, because I think that makes a big difference.
Yeah, good job.
Well, we appreciate your voices as well because you've, you know, good, another set of eyes, another set of questions. It's always great to have, so thank you.
Good.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Okay, um, so everyone, Tuesday, budget workshop. We'll be there. Okay.
It's usually the brick school for the first.
Yeah. Okay. I could check my calendar. Uh, six o'clock, yes, on Tuesday. Okay, um. So we are at policy revision, Mr. Chamberlain.
Sure.
Draft, yes.
Happy to.
So, um, this came up actually last year. Um, the, the, the start time changed last year and part of the change in the schedule of the school day instructional time at Sohegan was, um, changed, was, was reduced. So the necessity to make up snow days, uh, appeared. And the way, the, the past history for a number of years at Sohegan was the, the days would be not made up. And, and so the, um, And, and so the, um, the policy was if there was a waived day, the salary for hourly workers would stay constant. Um, and it wasn't going to, that was just part of the process. While last year, the concern was that the way the policy was read. They're going to get paid to keep their pay constant in two week period over day they miss. But then when we make it up at the end of the day, they're actually working that day. So they could be, in fact, get paid for two days for working one. You with me? Pick and I put down, so, um, last year there was, um, there was, there was some of this wasn't as a, a sense of urgency. Because if, if we did remote days, it would be a wash. Um, but the effectiveness of remote days and where we are, or at. And so now we are moving to more of a traditional snow day model for at least at the beginning. So the policy now is be rewritten in a way that. They do not get paid if we make up the day. They only get paid if we waive the day. Cause that's certainly not their word. Um, so, yeah, if we have a snow day, um, they will not get paid for that day, but we will make it up. They will get paid for that day. And there is a way working with our payroll department, if this, if the support staff would like to avail themselves, that they can create. Their own savings account, if you will, to make up if they were short. For example, if we had two snow days before February break. That would be seven days without compensation for those days. That could be a hardship for folks. And so we have worked with P P C in the staff to, and, and the payroll side. To provide an opportunity to allow them to create their own insurance if we ever had that worst case scenario. Um, so the, the sense of urgency for P P C and us is to give.
Yes. Yeah.
So this was, uh, P P C was very involved in the writing of that.
Yeah. So, so then the paid day, if it gets waived, would be at the end of the year. Because that's when that decision would get made. Okay. Yep.
Exactly.
I have no issue.
And, and that's pretty standard. If, if management says you cannot work this day, then we don't reduce their pay. That's, um, they need to make, that's pretty standard. Yep, you have. Yeah, and, and we have talked with payroll. They, they can manage it in that way and it's all good.
Yes.
Um, I don't know how many readings you want to have this. I don't know how much snow we're going to get in the next month. But it's up to you.
It's already gone to P P C. Y'all have been working on this. Do we have to have multiple readings? Can we just?
You can waive, the board has, uh, has the ability to waive multiple reading.
Alright, so I would make a motion that we waive multiple readings and pass the proposed amendments to. The snow day policy in.
G C B D slash G D.
Yes, G C B D, what Stephanie said.
G C B D slash G D B D.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gro- yep, Mr. Gross, just a second. Let's open up for discussion. Any concerns? I mean, I think it's straightforward. Let's make sure we pay them appropriately is.
Right.
Really what this is. And I know since they were directly involved in the wording of this, they're okay and they'll probably show up. They'll probably put it through their P P C process and.
Yeah.
They vote on their policies as well.
Uh, they did not feel, they felt the P P C committee could support. I did ask them if they had to take this to their membership and Andy said, no, he didn't have to take this to the membership. And, um, the support staff, representative P P C have been integrally involved in this work.
Gotcha.
It's not a surprise. It's not contribution.
Right. Christie, do you have any questions?
No, thank you. I'm good with it.
John, any questions?
Not, not really a question, but does that mean that the, the employees? Who wish to avail themselves of the proverbial, uh, you know, insurance, will they be able to, to start to contribute to that? Or, or exercise that option right away?
Uh, yes, they can, they can begin their payroll withdrawal. Um, the, the language is, uh, in a, the. They can even personalize it in a way that the withdrawals only occur during the ten day full pay period. Um, and that's what's been, and so they can start, and I will talk with Andy on Monday. And if, and if they would like to start withdrawing some on the full ten day periods and going forward, that can happen. I think there's, there is an internal control, which is kind of funky. So it's probably not immediately, but within two weeks.
Okay, so, okay, good. So they can satisfy themselves if they, if they succeed as they determine for themselves fairly quickly.
Right. Passing this tonight would help them. That would give us a month.
They are, no objection from me.
That was kind of my thought. Like I know, and, and I have admittedly, I have a little bit of an unfair advantage because I was at that P P C meeting where y'all talked about it, but yes.
I appreciate, thank you for the expedience and that will help.
Right. Alright, let's, uh, take a roll call vote since we have two people on. Mr. Keith, you want to start?
Keith, yes. Bonster, yes.
Grund, yes.
Bayou, yes.
Glaze Zimmerman, yes.
Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Okay, that passes. So you can take that, move back to P P C.
Excellent.
Thank you, everybody. Any committee updates that anyone at athletics? C I P, building and grounds, we've kind of discussed, unless there's anything with J F A C, building and grounds. Needs to come forward, other than the list that we saw, things being worked on. Policy committee, what's going on?
So I talked a little bit about what we're doing with J F A C. I mean, not J F A C, J F A C, right, with P P C. Um, and we've got the follow-up for that on, you said, January first. I've got that in my calendar. Um, we had another policy midi, December first, we had another policy committee meeting. Few weeks back, and I think there are some coming up for the full S A U read. That hasn't happened yet. But just working on mostly cleaning up things. What's left? What are the remnants? Yeah, close to the end.
Great. Um, communication, Mont Vernon, you want to just announce your, your thing on Saturday? Saturday, just so, just so everyone hears it and.
Saturday at the Malvern and Fire Station, um, members of Malvern and School Board, Pam and I will be, uh, treating everyone to donuts now, not scones. Just switch that up a little bit and, uh, welcome the community to attend.
Great, thank you. Um, and we'll be looking at Amherst doing another one early December now that budgets are all in. And just make sure we can have any feedback and we'll coordinate with the Amherst School Board as well.
If you know when you're going to do that, or if we could talk before you schedule it, I'd love to go to one and the last couple have all been scheduled at times.
Right on time. So.
Can do something about that. Yes, we can. Still being scheduled. I'd love to.
Okay.
Be involved.
Yep. Okay, we don't, yeah, we don't have a plan yet, but we're looking.
Yep.
Early December before things get too crazy, the holidays. Okay, so the last thing, retirements, is that something we're going to do in non-public?
Yes, we are.
Yes. Okay, so public input, two of two. Anybody have any input? Anything? No? Yes, anyone on? Zoom?
There was, there was some people. There's, um, two people on Zoom, but no hands raised.
No hands raised. If anyone is interested in speaking, I can go to our little thing. If anyone in the, on Zoom is interested, please raise your hand. And we will upgrade you to participant. I can read the little thing if we need to. Where it is.
Think we're all set?
No. Okay, then, um, let me go to the non-public. So we are going to go into a non-public session, uh, RSA ninety one, A three, two, A.
And C.
And C. Now I have a motion. Mr. Gross, a motion, a second. Mr. Bayou, second. Um, roll call vote. Grund, yes.
Bayou, yes.
Glaze Zimmerman, yes. Christine?
Peters, yes.
Okay.
So, um, send a new link.
Yeah, a new link.
To you and send to Johnny.
Okay, we'll send John, Christine, we'll, we'll send you a new link. Hold on, hold on.
We're going to stop recording at least right now, right?